Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to call to order the Bamber County School District Board of Trustees meeting to order. Today's date is August 22, 2024, and the time is approximately 6:00 PM. This meeting is a regular meeting that was rescheduled to today's date. At this time, I would like for us to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you want?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We may also just have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. We are down to item number three on the agenda. Item number one was called to order. Item number two, Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. And number three is approval of the agenda. And board members, you've had an opportunity to receive and review the agenda prior to tonight's meeting. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, we approve the agenda presented for August 22nd of 2024.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. We are down to item number four, which is approval of the minutes for July 8, 2024. Again, you had an opportunity to receive and review these meeting minutes. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of the minutes for July 8?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I'm going to motion that we accept the minutes for July 8, 2024. If there's need, we will spare a minute.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. We are now down to item number five on the agenda, which is the school reports. And I will open it up to Shannon Johnson with Denmark Elementary, Denmark Olart Elementary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I would take this opportunity to thank you for welcoming me to ask the principal at Denmark Olart Elementary School. I'm truly enjoying it, and I want to say thank you. Our current enrollment for Denmark Olart Elementary School is 231, which is up from July, and it's steadily going up every day. Our, our teachers return on Monday, July 29, where they attended professional development sessions and prepared the classroom, the building, to welcome our students on Monday, August 5, 2024. We also were served a delicious breakfast catered by Beverly Earhart Cafeteria staff. We truly enjoyed it. It was delicious, and it made for great conversation and had everyone together. We were fellowship and welcomed each other back, but it was energizing, and I enjoyed that. So shout out to Beverly Earhart Cafeteria staff. We had open house, Title I meeting on August 19, from 3:30 to 6:00. We had a great turnout. It was approximately 125 adults. There probably was more than that because we had grandmothers, we had grandfathers, and sisters and brothers, and everyone came. The parents received Title I information. They also attended a Title I meeting with a PowerPoint that they received, and also another brochure of Title I information. So they left with the wealth of knowledge of Title I. Denmark Olart Elementary School has been awarded funds for the South Carolina Department of Education to begin operating the 21st Century After School Program. Thus far, we have a total of 81, and I think it's higher now, of second, third, fourth, and fifth grade students. We operate Monday through Thursday from 2:50 to 5:30. Our first day of after-school program was this week, Tuesday, August 20, and thus far it's going great. Yes.
What were the grades in there, like second through?
Second through fifth grade. Yes. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Patricia Goldsmith with Denmark Olart Middle School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to give you some updates from the last meeting. Enrollment has stayed pretty steady. When I sent it to you, it was 146 students. We're at 147. So we had just as many students to withdraw that may have moved, but we were able to replace those with students who came for enrollment. By the first day of school, we had registration on 29th and 30th. We registered 47 students one day, 41 the next day. By the first day of school, only 12 students were not registered for school. So I want to really commend our parents for working with us to make sure we were able to get students registered and get correct addresses and phone numbers in our system. We had a combined Title I open house meeting that we had to reschedule on Monday. And just like the elementary school, it was very well-attended, and we were very pleased to be able to have our new teachers in the building, our international teachers that were able to meet our parents as they came in. The biggest change for the middle school at Denmark this year, we moved from block scheduling to traditional scheduling. So block scheduling is a 90-minute period. We've moved to seven periods. So all of our students are covered with certified teachers, and we have one that's working on alternative certification, and she's expected to be finished at the end of this school year. So that's very promising for us. And in the traditional periods, we added an intervention period, which is a 30-minute block. Our students will receive tutoring. During that time, we will also do social-emotional learning during that time, and some leadership skills, and also clubs and organizations on Fridays. We currently are taking math testing this week. We finished today with reading, and sixth graders will test again on Monday. We're the only group that will test in science. And we will begin our high-intensity tutoring in small groups for students in grades six to eight. After Labor Day, we're putting together the list of those students now. The teachers and I will be looking at the data to see where our students are and identifying those students to put in small groups in all subjects. And that is our report for the middle school. Are there any questions? Right after Labor Day.
Ms. Lauter, of the 12 students that were not registered, are they registered now or?
We're down to two.
And I also want to, I attended the Title I meeting on this past week. I want to commend you guys, Dr. Simmons, Dr. Johnson, and yourself for how well you handled the meeting and how well you answered the questions that were put to you about the Title I funds. I just want to commend y'all that. It was, you did such a great job until I had parents telling me, you know, they really appreciated the information and the way I just brought it across to them. And I was asked to pass that along to the three of you principals, you know, keep up the good work because the children are improving.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have De'anni Simmons with Denmark Olart High School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Think one of the things we say in the South is long time no see. Good to see y'all once again.
Likewise.
I want to share with you just as a preface before I get into this, obviously, this information was sent to you several weeks prior to the start of school. So some of these things I hear have already transpired, and I'll try to update as best I can, and I'll try not to repeat some of the same things that my colleagues have said because we've shared a number of activities at schools, okay? But anyway, our current enrollment as of today is 186, and that's down three from last year because we ended the year at 189. So it's 186. And I was surprised at that number because we've had so many students who transferred in from surrounding districts. So we'll see how that goes as we move forward. Obviously, there hasn't been any discipline, and I'm certainly thankful for that. But I want to mention this to you. Obviously, we have students who attend Denmark Tech who are doing enrollment. If things go as we hope they will, we anticipate having six students who will get their associate in science prior to receiving their high school diploma this year. And we have another five students who will get their general studies certificate prior to getting their high school diploma. So that's something that we're really proud of.
Yes.
We have that enrollment agreement that's going very well, and obviously, the numbers continue to increase each year. So I anticipate maybe the next year, we'll get out of the single-digit area and be in the double digit as it relates to the number of students who are earning their college degree, or at least their associate's degree from college prior to getting their high school diploma. That's something we're very proud of. Important dates, obviously, we had the open house earlier this week, and as my colleagues have said, I thought that went exceptionally well. Hadn't had a turnout as large as that in a number of years, so I was really encouraged to see the number of parents we had, especially those who came to the Title I annual leading component of the open house night. I actually have a meeting on the same night, which was Monday, the 19th, with the senior parents, and that went exceptionally well. It was the first time I had an opportunity to sit with parents and just hear their concerns about the senior year for their kids and activities that we're doing and, you know, scholarships that are out there and what are we doing? Because this group has really taken a great interest in the seniors this year, and I'm really excited about that, and I'm looking forward to working with those parents and students, ensuring that they get across that stage one way or another this year. One of the components that we kind of did, we started maybe about March of last year and we're continuing this year, we built into our master schedule an intervention period of time where kids are coming together and working specifically on end-of-course strategy, strategies to pass to help them pass English II, Algebra I, Biology, or U.S. History. And we do that each day throughout the week except on Friday, because Friday is the day that we have our clubs. And there are a number of clubs that we have created, and as we get into the year, I'll bring that back to you and share with you the various clubs that we're offering students this year. I will say that in recent years, we've stayed away from using or having a yearbook just because the cost associated with it, what we found was that school would essentially have to pay for it because students weren't buying it. One of the teachers that we brought in this year has offered to create an electronic, a virtual yearbook for us with some students. They're going to be working on that after school. So we're excited to actually bring a yearbook back to Denmark Olart High School that we can just push out and it don't cost us anything. Thank goodness for that. We're finishing up our math testing tomorrow. We're continuing our MTSS initiative, which is Multi-Tier Systems of Support. And we started our after-school program on the 20th. We also have a high-intensity tutoring that's going to be started here the next few weeks, which is being paid for through a grant from the state department. And that's what I have as it relates to the going on at Denmark Olart High School. Certainly answer any questions you may have.
No questions? Like to touch?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. It's good to see y'all.
Good to see you all. And next up, we have Maythe Edwards Edwards, Richa Caro Elementary School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as I said, these numbers are quite old from when I turned this in, but I believe this morning you upped the 691 students.
Wow.
Yes, ma'am. I agree. Yes, I say it every day. Currently, while we are staffed, we are looking for teachers just to kind of help with those class numbers because they have gotten really high. As you can see, our movement, we've had our open house. It was a success. We had lots of business partners there, stuff our peers to sign up for. Our first School Improvement Council, PTO, and annual Title I meeting will be Monday night. And then I'm excited to say we're starting a new program, The Watch Dogs, dads of grade students, trying to get some positive role models in our school for students. We have our launch party coming up this Tuesday from 6:00 to 7:00. Even pizza, we're going to come out. We've had a great just influx of dads, uncles, granddaddies already signed up. My PTO, which is here tonight, actually brought this to my attention, and we kind of started last year, but it's going into effect this year. So just lots of great things, and looking forward to great schools.
Great.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank y'all.
Next up, we have Denise Miller with Bamber Earhart Middle School.
Well, greetings.
Greetings.
Glad to see all of you.
Likewise.
So to have a few adjustments from your report. Our current enrollment is 188. We're up by one student. We have 89 students in seventh grade and 99 students in eighth grade, so there has been some shifting. We have a talent for all of the students who did not show up within the first 10 days of school. They've been located. All of them have transferred to another middle school elsewhere. Discipline for July 2024 looks fabulous. And our student achievement data will be back. I'll be back in front of you in September with our SC Ready and EOC data. We held seventh-grade orientation, which was a Title I parent engagement activity on July 30. We had 83% of our seventh-grade students and their families attending. We scheduled math testing on August 6 to 7, Debbie said otherwise. So we held math testing last Tuesday and Wednesday on the 13th and the 14th. We're going to do makeup on tomorrow, and we should conclude with our math testing. Our teachers will begin analyzing that data so we can implement our MTSS processes. And the last thing is for the last week and a half, we've been using our BEMS Academy. It's a delivery system for school-wide expectations and procedures. I write the lessons, and all of our teachers push those lessons out, and in the morning during our advisory time, right now, we've been talking about school-wide behavior expectations, our student code of conduct, technology procedures, Google Classroom, and academic expectations. We want to make sure that all of our students are clear on the way Bamber Earhart Field School operates. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Gordon Smith with Bamber Earhart High School. And I assume, Denny, you're going to say?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Gordon's filling tonight. Enrollment's up. He's up to 390, as of earlier this month. His number continues to climb too. I think we graduated last year, I think we had about 360 at the end of the school year last year, so he's up about 30 right now. New teachers at Bamber Heart High School, Ms. Jingle and Air, Ms. Carol Dean, Mr. Russell Henderson, Mr. Rodney LaBarro, Mr. John Rodriguez, and Ms. Coretta Smith are all new to Bamber Heart High School. Mr. Smith certainly wants to welcome those teachers to his school. Mr. Smith is not able to make it tonight because he's got an open house tonight. They got a community pep rally going on. They got a sophomore parent meeting, all kinds of, meet the Raiders, this is a big night at Bamber Heart High School tonight, so he was not able to come. And that was, that started at 5:30 this afternoon. So if you have any questions, this man, I'll do my best to answer.
All right. Is that a second opinion? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith is going down in the afternoons, and my understanding is he does have a pet man. He is trying to feel, we are still looking for a band director. We were having a difficult time finding one. Mr. Smith is doing his best to kind of deploy in those holes best he can and be the school principal and all the other good stuff he gets to do all at the same time. So he's still trying to keep, obviously, you know, this first love is the man, and he's trying everything he can to, you know, try to weather this storm until we can find somebody, which he can, you know.
We'll certainly appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Certainly will. Okay? Any other questions?
Can you tell us about this special presentation? I understand that the parent came up to the school that was taken care of.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. Earlier this week, Mr. Smith presented a memorial plaque to Ms. Lydia Washington in memory of Japari McPerry. She was unable to come tonight, so they went ahead and scheduled it. So she came in the summer earlier this week and met her this week and presented that to her, so.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And I think that you'll do the athletic?
Also, Mr. Robert Williams, yes, ma'am. Meet the Raiders and all of this stuff that's got him too. If you look in your packets, everybody has an obstacle league pass. You've got to show an obstacle league pass in your packets. You also should have all of our fall calendars on the schedules for Bamber and Denmark schools for all of the sports teams that we field. So once again, if you have any specific questions about athletics, Mr. Robert Williams is the man to ask, but I can do my best if anybody has a question.
So I didn't see the athletic pass in my packet.
It is in. This is in that book, yes, ma'am. You're sorry.
That's okay. Okay? Anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you so much. Number six is what Mr. Omar just spoke on. So we will, and number seven, he spoke on, so we are down to item number eight, which is the superintendent's report and student staff recognition. I'll turn that over to Dr. Brown.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And welcome back to a brand-new school year. It's exciting for all of us, and we are looking forward, as we were just saying earlier, to it's a great school, so wishing all the best to everyone. Tonight, as we open up, I would like to start off by remembering this past week, Stephanie, we lost one of our dear staff members, and we consider her a dear family member. Miss Grisley, she was faculty and staff member at Denmark Olart High School. Just wanted to remember her tonight as I start off, and also ask that we keep her family and children and grandchildren and her extended family in our prayers. She was very dear to a lot of us. Great. I would like to say, noting that we started off on a new school year, I'd like to extend my heartfelt appreciation to our custodians and our administration, all of our faculty and staff. They've worked very hard this summer giving everything ready. I'd also like to thank Mr. Line Burr and Mr. Ricky Paget and Jessica and our maintenance workers, Mr. Ray, Mr. Ott, Mr. Beard, Mr. Omar. I mean, so many people worked so hard over the summer making sure our buildings and facilities got updated and necessary updates inside and out. So I wanted to thank all of them for their hard work. Also, I wanted to thank school-level personnel, cafeteria staff, or bus drivers, or principals and guidance counselors, and all of their teachers and staff, along with our school improvement councils and our PTOs, because without them, where would we be? We are all spoken real, and so wanted to say thank you to everybody for helping us get off to a great start, for all of their support for our schools throughout the year. Next, I'd like to say, congratulations. We have a board member who has reached level two as a board member, and that is Ms. Harriet Coker. So at this time, I'd like to present Ms. Coker for pen. Ms. Coker, congratulations.
Thank you for your service.
Also, board members, you will find a copy in your individual training reports in the folders that were left in front of each of you upon your arrival. If you have any questions about that, you should see that in your packet, about your individual trainings. SCASPA, accidental death and dismemberment policy, a list of coverages and beneficiaries for each of you is also in your folder. If you have any beneficiary updates, please contact Jessica Moody with that information. Also, in your folders is a listing of all upcoming SCASPA training events. Please check and initial any event that you are interested in going to and get that information back to Ms. Moody by the end of tonight's meeting. All right. And I think Ms. Moody sent out an email to everyone earlier this week, last week, to remind you, SCASPA would like a welcome-back photo with our school boards, and our meeting was rescheduled, so if you would hang around tonight and let's get that to you, Harriet, we appreciate that. Okay. Also, SCASPA. As you know, each year, each district gets to send a delegate and an alternate to the delegate assembly. So tonight, if you would, please decide on a delegate and an alternate to send it out so that Jessica can tell them.
All right. You will probably also receive some information in the mail from them with regard to that so we know it was coming up. So at this time, you know, we'll open up the floor to anyone that wants to be a delegate and an alternate. And the date on that is December? The date on that, Dr. Brown?
December 7.
December 7. Don't everybody rush?
I'll volunteer to be a delegate. An alternate.
Okay, so our delegate, or board members, you all okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so our delegate will be Naomi Echols, and our alternate will be Beverly Bonenpart. And what's the deadline? If there are any adjustments, what's the deadline on that?
November 12.
November 12. If you can just remind me via email or something that that date's forthcoming, thank you. So you can submit that on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. So board members, I think Ms. Moody laid on your table, as you've probably heard through some of the local media, the embargo on our district's score. some of the local media, the embargo on our district score, district test scores, has been lifted, so I can now share with you some good information. We have all been anxiously awaiting for it, compiling it. The principals and myself, and school-level staff have all been digging deep into our data, and looking at where are we now with our test scores compared to where we were a year ago, compared to the state averages. So you have in your packets three pages of information, and I just want to explain, it is my job to present to you the district-level data. Next month, at our regularly-scheduled board meeting, each principal will bring to you their individual school information. We didn't want to overload you tonight, because there is such a thing as data overload, so I'll present the districts tonight, and we'll do the schools individually next month. All right? So let's dive in. So first, on your first sheet, you have a self-control of ready scores by grade level. I tried to make this very reader-friendly. And of course, you know, the tested grade levels are grades three through eight, and they take ELA in math and South Carolina Ready. So I provided to you in the first column the 2023 scores. The second column in red is the 2024 scores, so that we can compare them. Third column is the increase or decrease by percentage points, and the final column are the state's average scores for that particular grade level, so we can compare ourselves to both last year and to the state's scores. You agree with me?
Yep.
Okay. So for purposes of the public listening tonight, if you agree with me, I'll go through these by grade level. We'll start off in ELA, in grade three in 2023. Those scoring meets or exceeds. These are what's part of your school report cards. Thirty-seven point six percent in grade three in 2023, thirty-six point eight percent in 2024, slight decrease by a little less than one percentage point, compared to a state average of fifty-three point eight percent. Grade four, thirty-eight point nine percent in 2023, forty-three point four percent in 2024. We saw an increase of four point five percentage points. State average, fifty-seven point two percent. Grade five, thirty-five point three percent last year, thirty-nine point four percent this year, increase of four point one percentage points to state average fifty-five point six percent. Grade six, twenty-eight point eight percent for last year, forty-one point five percent for this year, an increase of over twelve, twelve point seven percentage points. State average was fifty-three point seven percent. Grade seven, forty percent in 2023, thirty-eight point five percent in 2024, decrease of one and a half percentage points. The state score average was fifty point three. And then, grade eight, forty-two point four percent last year, thirty-nine point six percent this year, loss of two point eight percentage points. The state scores for that grade level was fifty point three percent. So in ELA, break it down, we saw increases across the county, across the district, in three out of six grade levels. So we are moving. And sadly, we had slight decreases in the other three grade levels, but the decreases were slight. But we've got some closing the achievement gaps, our scores compared to the state, but we're headed in the right direction. All right? South Carolina Ready math scores by grade level. Again, all students in grades three through eight take South Carolina Ready math. Starting in grade three, 2023 was thirty-three point one percent, 2024, forty-one point five percent, gain of eight point four percentage points. South Carolina Ready state scores was fifty-four point six percent for that grade level. Grade four, twenty-seven point five percent last year, thirty-seven point five percent this year, a gain of ten percentage points. State scores, fifty-one percent for this year. Grade five, twenty-three point five percent last year, twenty-six percent this year, a gain of two and a half percentage points. State score for that grade level, forty-five point seven percent. Grade six, seventeen point eight percent last year, twenty-four point six percent this year, gain of six point eight percentage points. State score for that grade level, thirty-eight point four percent. Grade seven, eighteen point six percent last year, sixteen point one percent this year, loss of two and a half percentage points. State score for that grade level this year, thirty-three point seven percent. Grade eight, last year, thirty-three point six percent, this year, twenty-six point eight percent, loss of six point eight percentage points. South Carolina state score for this grade level was thirty point three percent. So, in math, our district saw an increase in four out of six grade levels. So very promising there. Also, we're following the state's trends, and where we're seeing our weakest grade levels is in line with the state trends as well, and of course, you can see that's grade seven and eight. And then, let me explain science. So in science, that is South Carolina Pass. Last year, they field-tested a new science test in grades four and six. They're not reporting their scores this year for that, because it was a field test. Students will receive, I believe, individual student score reports, but that will not be reported this year, because it was a new test last year. Now, let's go to high school. At the high school level, we are measured on our intercourse assessments, and how students do in those assessments. And last year, students for intercourse, there were four subject areas, that includes algebra, biology, English II, U.S. history, and the Constitution. At the end of the 2023 school year in algebra, we had thirty-nine, a little different in for intercourse. In intercourse is not a matter of just passing the test. In order, our school report cards based on for students who score C or higher, so it's not passing, it's C or better. All right? You agree with me? So, from '23, the end of the '22, '23 school year, in algebra, was thirty-nine point sixty-two percent scoring C or better, but at the end of the 2024 school year, it's forty-six point ninety-eight percent, a gain of seven point three six percentage points, and the state scores was fifty point seventy-four. Biology, last year, seventeen point fifty-six percent scoring C or better. This year, more than doubled that, thirty-seven point thirty-two percent scoring C or better, a gain of nineteen point seventy-six percentage points. State score for that subject, forty-seven point twenty-six. English II, last year's fifty percent, this year, we saw a gain fifty point three two percent, again, point thirty-two percents of a percentage point. The state score for English, for that subject area, was sixty-nine point fifty-six percent. U.S. history and the Constitution. Last year, we had twenty-eight point oh five percent, this year, twenty-four point four five percent, so we've lost some ground in that subject area of three point six percentage points, but the state score is forty-three point seventy-eight percent. So in looking at that, again, the results are very promising for our district. We went up in three out of four scores in the district, and we're closing that gap between our district and the state scores, but we still have some work to do, particularly in the area of U.S. history and the Constitution. And then, career readiness. This too, if you note, there's a note there, copied from the State Department of Education, so please read the note at the bottom. These data may differ from state and federal accountability results. These data are calculated based on where students tested, regardless of their student entry date, and it includes South Carolina Career Assessment Score data. The district report card will include this data combined with several other layers of data. And what that means, I'm reporting to you tonight the number of the percentages of students who on the South Carolina Career Ratingness Assessment received a credential at all, and those who scored a level three or higher. I want to, but I'm not reporting on the number of students who are completers, the number of students who scored, what they scored on SAT, or ACT, or when. All of that will be factored in on the school report card. Okay? So, but focusing on career readiness, '22, '23 school year, the percent of students that received a credential was fifty-three point eight percent. '23, '24 was fifty-two point nine percent, so a little less than a percentage point we lost there. Take a look at the number of students tested. At the end of the 2023 school year, we had a total of 173 students tested, whereas this past school year, we only had 136. So that affects your numerator and denominator there a little bit. And then, same, same way as South Carolina Ready, your school report card's based on students scoring C or higher in your subject areas. For your career readiness assessment, it's based on students who earn a silver, gold, or platinum certificate, all right? So that's called a level three or higher. Three, four, and five is your silver, gold, and platinum. So in '22, '23, in our county, with thirty point six percent of students scoring silver or higher, and in the end of this past school year, with thirty-one point six percent, so we had a percentage gain in that category.
And excuse me, why do you feel that the number of students that you talked about there is something?
Enrollment last year.
So we just didn't have many students?
And you do, in your classes, that your eleventh-grade cohorts, and by the way, this is just an eleventh-grade that takes this assessment. So each year, you know, a cohort can vary greatly in the number of students in that cohort, like a graduating class. All right? And then, the third page I supplied to you is, so if you go back to our intercourse scores, I want to explain, we have an honors eighth-grade class, they take intercourse exam, too, but because they're eighth grade, their scores are counted in middle school, and they're not factored into the high school. So the assessment, the intercourse scores that I gave you over here, do not include, we had seventeen students last year, who took the EOC in algebra in grade eight. The year prior was around that same number of students, maybe one or two more, but in 2022, 2023, the eighth graders who took EOC algebra, we had ninety-four point one percent scoring C or higher. But in this past school year, one hundred percent.
Wow.
So we gained five point nine percentage points on that, and state score results was fifty point seventy-four percent. Because I hear you say we're well above that.
Wow.
So, I just want to say, congratulations to all of our principals, assistant principals, teachers. They're doing a phenomenal job. It's fallen apart, we used words you used earlier, our students are making progress. They're working hard, and kudos to the students and their parents, and our teachers, for all the hard work they're putting into this academic achievement progress that we are making.
Excuse me, are new students on this last page in algebra, they're eighth-grade students? Is that called honors algebra?
It is.
But really, ninth grade, fourth grade?
And this year, we will see more changes in state testing. They won't no longer take it in algebra, they'll take ESE in algebra, algebra II, English II, algebra II, of course, biology, and U.S. history and Constitution. As the state changes, so do we. All right. Next senior packet, we heard all the principals talking about tonight, enrollment. And I'm happy to report, our enrollment is up. Heard the schools said our enrollment's up, and that's also reflected in our district's enrollment. As of this morning, we had eighteen hundred and twenty-five students enrolled in our district compared to this time, around about this time last year, about seventeen, seventy-two? That's right. Also, compared to when we got out in May, we ended the year with seventeen eighty-one, and we're sitting on eighteen twenty-five now. So, I'll reiterate, one of the principals said earlier, we are taking applications. But we are, we are proud, and the parents want to bring their children to school, and they're coming from all over the place. Even, we've had a lot of students enroll this year from Scranton County, so we're proud Also, a copy of all 2024, 2025 school handbooks are included in your board packets. We are working on sending handbooks out digitally, we continue to plug away at that. Technology is great, but we also gave out paper copies as well, so everybody's gotten a copy, as well as you guys. If you have any questions about either of those, you can contact the respective school's principals or one of us, we're happy to answer the questions you may have. And lastly, in your board packets, Ms. Moody has been gracious enough to do board policies that we've approved in the second reading, so our board packets, we need to replace the new policies. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you for that. Moving down to item number nine, which is request for out-of-state overnight trip.
Yes, ma'am. So we have one from Denmark High School for the seniors and juniors to go to the Augusta Convention Center to attend the CSRA College Night Event on Thursday, September the 12th, so I'll bring that to you guys tonight for board approval, because that is out of state. You have a list of things that are going to see while they're there, because you have a list of the chaperones.
Okay.
All the information should be there for you.
All right, board members, you've had an opportunity to receive and review this as well, prior to tonight's meeting, so what is the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of this field trip?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the out-of-state trip to the CSRA College Night Event.
Second? We have a motion on the floor in a second, any discussion? Here or none? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye. Hearing no opposition, the ayes happen and the motion carries. Okay? We are down to item number 10, which is discussion of the 2024, '25 calendar, and any action that might be needed.
Yes, ma'am. Hello. Okay. So as you all know, our first week of school, sadly, Hurricane came, traveled up the East Coast. Debbie, would you thank our school that week? We missed three days of school. We had not had time to give out devices. Teachers had not had time to acclimate students to these devices, and therefore, we are not able to use e-learning days for those days. We will be making up those days. So I want to say that now for the public to hear, parents and students who may be listening, and faculty and staff. I have, Mr. Olmer and myself have been in communications with our State Department of Education, talking with Ms. C.R. Hall, who's over, manages school district calendars and approves them, gives guidance to districts and such. And so we had to take a look again at our calendar, where are we going to make up those three days we missed due to Hurricane Debbie. And so I'll bring back to you tonight, board members, our calendar, because we have to build back in those makeup days. And you have a copy of the calendar in front of you in your board packet. Everybody see that? So based on our conversations with the State Department, we are suggesting, I'm suggesting, board members, that we make up these days, two of the three days. Unfortunately, we had planned for a fall break this year during, for October 10th and 11th, but we are suggesting that we make up two of those days on those days. This would give our high school students the opportunity to recruit two days of instruction prior to the end of the semester, in which they miss those days of instruction.
Okay.
So what you have in front of you is a calendar. You'll see that we're October tenth, eleventh, used to be denoted as fall break. It is now color-coded gray for inclement weathered makeup days. All right. And then the third makeup day that is built into our calendar, this is a state requirement, you have to have three on the calendar, and we, just so happened, we missed three days for Debbie. But the third makeup day is denoted as April eighteenth, which is that good Friday. So that would occur in the spring. So that's one change on the calendar that I'm asking the board to consider tonight out of necessity.
Okay. You all, you okay?
Ms. Tucker, you need another copy?
I got it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
The second request that I've received from principals this year is to ask the board members to please consider this. As you know, for past, last year or the year before, we have held two graduation ceremonies, one on a Friday and one on a Saturday. But I am bringing the board tonight for your consideration that this year we try something different, which is to have one day of graduation ceremonies the way other districts have done such. And that is our graduation day, provided we don't miss any more days. Let's pray we have no more hurricanes, no ice storms, no tornadoes. But by us making up the days on October tenth and eleventh and April eighteenth, that leaves our graduation day that where we had originally planned it on May the thirtieth. But we are asking for the board to consider having both graduation ceremonies on that Friday, possibly holding one, uh, two at three o'clock in the afternoon and the other one at six P.M. that night as planned. Yes, ma'am.
I understand that these were the days. I'm not worried about the graduation, that's a good idea. I'm concerned that the children will be in school all of August, almost all of September, and almost all of October. That would long happen without them. Great. But I mean, I do see they have Wednesday and night.
We have Labor Day. They get Labor Day out. They're also out, students are out on October tonight because that's the professional development day, so they had that day out. Plus, we have early release day on September twenty-fourth. They will get out early. And they have an early release day on October twenty-seventh. So you have two days they'll be at school and two early release days during that, during this month you mentioned. So there are some breaks there.
So we have an early release this month.
Yes, ma'am.
Early release next month. Early release the following month.
Yes, ma'am. Plus the ninth of October, plus Labor Day, plus November fifth for election day.
Yep.
And every Saturday and Sunday.
And every Saturday and Sunday. So with that being said, Ms. Hurst, you good?
Being wishful that, you know. I guess I forgot where to do it.
So.
What time is the early dismissal? Is there a letter?
The early dismissals. Early release.
October, everybody's going for lunch. We stagger.
And we stagger so that the buses can get near the schools.
So that's item number one. And then, what, how do y'all feel about both graduations being on May thirtieth at three P.M. and six P.M.? Does anybody have any problem with that?
So has like, wasn't there like an issue before, I guess, about the graduations being on the same day? Like, is there, I guess, as far as like security wise?
No, I have spoken with the, our SROs in all of our school. And I've also spoken with Sheriff Bamber. It's, we can do it.
All right, well, with regards to the makeup days being October tenth, October eleventh, and April eighteenth of 2025, as well as both graduations being on May thirtieth, one at three P.M. and one at six P.M., I'll entertain a motion on those two matters. Okay. Do you have a second? Motion on the floor in a second, any discussion?
Do we have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Does the administration feel that there's no time to get from one graduation ceremony to the other?
It was the student ministers that brought this up, did you know?
I was just wondering if they could.
Yes, ma'am.
Start a two or something.
Okay. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries, you may proceed. Anything else on that?
And Ms. Hurst, to be, I can go back to the high school principals again, make sure they have enough time. They can set the times of their graduation. I just needed to make sure y'all were okay with the date, so they have to fudge a little bit if they think options this year tonight. Thank you for that, thank you. Worked with that.
And if anything needs to change with regards to those times for the graduations, just let us know.
Yes, ma'am.
We've got plenty of time to make any adjustments.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that takes care of that. Absolutely.
You don't think there's a chance to consider excusing one of those working folks?
Not from our conversations we had over the last two weeks.
I just was hoping.
We did too.
What scares me is that there may be more.
My call was all in hoping that, I was asking about it, Schiesel, and what I got was recommendations to just take a look at your calendar.
Yeah, and add another date next year.
All right. Anything else? Anything else, you're good.
We're good.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next up is the monthly financial report, and I will turn that over to Devon Hurst.
Good evening, everyone. In your packet, you have the letter from the auditors. They're gonna start the audit, and then we start the preliminary work, and then they'll come back to the auditors to finish. We're moving right along, right along with all our facility work. We did have some water issues after the rain. Our roofs just couldn't handle the amount of water that's getting on them quite fast enough. We had an insurance adjuster in here this week, and we are working on some issues. We went to every school because there was not one school that didn't have something leaking. So we will be working each school to get their schools repaired or painted, some with ceiling tiles, just, the water just couldn't, we had just nowhere to go. But we are working on that, we are working on getting ready for the audit, and we are working on finishing the cosmetology building. We just had one issue, they can have that rectified, and then we should get our final inspection from O.S.F. And then the L.L.R. board will come in and inspect, and then we will open for business with cosmetology. And you also have your packet in your folder. If you have any questions, I will be happy to speak to them. Do you have any questions about your financial work? If you've got the air, we'll back you.
I have just one question. I know the tennis team is perfectly.
Tennis courses, they're big. Tennis courts are basically, took care of that, yes, ma'am. We had taken care of it in Peytonwood, yes, ma'am. We're going with that.
Thank you. Glad we got that done. Okay. If there are no further questions, you've had an opportunity to receive and review the report prior to tonight's meeting. What's the pleasure of the board with regards to accepting this report? It's been presented to us.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I'll make a motion out of self, but I'd like you to come to Mr. Hurst.
All right. Motion on the floor in a second, any discussion? Here are none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and we are down to item number twelve, which is visitors' comments, and I don't see that anyone signed up, so we will move directly into item number thirteen, which is executive session. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to executive session?
Yes, ma'am. I move that we move into executive session to discuss A, employment personnel, personnel recommendations for hire, and personnel recommendations for resignation, B, discussion of release of students, and C, discussion of superintendent evaluation.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor in a second, any discussion? Here are none. If you're in favor of moving into executive session, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. We will move out of open session into executive session to discuss A, employment personnel, one, personnel recommendations for hire, two, personnel recommendations for resignation, discussion of release of students, and discussion of superintendent's evaluation. So at this time, we will now move into executive session. I wish to thank everyone that attended. Appreciate all of your hard work. The summer and the start of.
Okay, board members, I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session back in open session.
Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am.
Is that a make or a motion to be returned for open session for any active changes?
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Here or none, all in favor please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, we are now back in open session. We are down to item number 14, which is action on executive session items if needed. Where are we at?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the personnel recommendations for hire for employees 1A through 1G. We approve the personnel recommendation for resignation for 2A. And that we approve the student transfer request for students B1 through B12.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and second, any discussion? Here are none, if you're in favor please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Here are no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We are now down to item number 15, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
All right, motion on the floor, is there a second?
Yes.
All right, we have a second, any discussion? Here are none, if you're in favor please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
There are no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries and this meeting is adjourned.